Where did you like when you what what I'm listening to?
Yeah.
Be concerned.
No, so they need that, you know, what would you do on service? No, there's for that. You can also weigh out some. So Ms. Julie, you want your assistant councilwoman also?
I want what?
Ms. Castle is very comedy.
Well, it doesn't say councilman.
That's councilman.
This is councilmember. You could be a member.
Gender, gender neutral. We're all councilmembers except.
It's the way that we're going. We have to just keep it neutral.
No, no.
But she's councilwoman.
You don't have to. I changed mine. We don't have. Yeah, I I have a gender. I like to identify with it.
Does somebody know the secret on this monitor to get it to go?
Broken. Taylor.
Hit it.
He's got technical problems.
Who knows?
Brett.
Brett. Monitor will turn on.
It's on.
Taylor is on the case.
Always. Yeah. Now I just had to give him a little book. He's headed up here.
And now we just got to get out of this call. They're down below.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm beating out that?
No, I don't. I didn't bring it. I'm I'm charged today, but there's been other days when I'm like trying to spring it out. They just need to, I mean, you can mount it just right in here.
Yeah.
Cut it out. I can knock it out. I could knock it out and probably a couple hours. I'm a full engineer. I mean, I'm not. I'm not a certified contractor. They they are better at it than me.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. As you good. Okay. Uh, we'll begin this meeting uh by adopting the agenda. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then uh can I get Jen? Would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we would like to invite uh Chief Atkins to come forward and deliver our thought and our prayer.
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity. It's become a bit of a tradition for me to speak in council meeting around uh National Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is observed each year on May fifteenth. Um, but yeah, I just want you to know how much I appreciate you allowing me to continue to do this. So I had my comments prepared. But yesterday I attended the funeral for Sergeant Bill Hoosier uh of the Santaquin Police Department. Now that event caused me to change course a bit. So uh I must admit to you, this won't be quite as polished as Navy in past years. I'm angered by Sergeant Hoosier's death. And I'm saddened by the uh the loss that his family must now endure. I'm fortunate that I was able to attend his funeral um with my wife. Truthfully, I felt that it was something that I needed to do. I need I I needed to reconnect with this profession that has had such a deep impact on my life. And so uh I want to share with you three things that I took away from yesterday. First, um, I'm in awe of the camaraderie that exists within the first responder family. I I didn't personally know Sergeant Hoosier. And I'm imagining most of the officers and firefighters that took part in the event and many public works uh personnel who lined the freeway. They didn't know him either. Hundreds of officers, some not even from Utah, took the time to show appreciation and pay respects. And it's pretty humbling to know that while there are hundreds of thousands of uh police officers in the United States, the individual still means that much to the collective. My second takeaway came during Chief Hurst's comments. He mentioned that he had worried about this day for years. He said he had played this uh over and over in dreams. And uh this really touched me because I've I've often wondered if I was the only one. I've had I've had the dream he spoke of. I've received the that early morning call from a supervisor and wondered is it going to be that call? So I thank Chief Hurst for sharing that with me. I hope I hope I never have to face that fear. But if that is part of my path, I hope I can do it with the courage and grace that he displayed. My final takeaway is partly based on the comments by Governor Cox and partly on my own observations over twenty-five years in this profession. And it is that I and all other officers in this state blessed to serve in Utah. The people of this state rightfully have very high expectations for their police officers. But time and again, they're there for us in our hour of need. I don't want to meet the officer who was not moved by all these people who took off work on a random Monday to line to line the route to a cemetery or by the flags hanging from overpasses, businesses and backyard balconies or by the children standing with hands over their hearts. They were there because Sergeant Hoosier died. But their support was for all of us. I want our community to know that the members of Syracuse Police Department understand the trust you place in us. We are honored to serve here. And we are grateful for your support. I hope our community will join me tonight in a prayer for Sergeant Hoosier. And an extra prayer that this type of tragedy never comes to Syracuse.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. At this time, I want to exercise one point of privilege. Many of you are probably not aware, but uh recently um one of our similar ranks uh has passed uh last week uh or yeah, uh Mayor Howard Madsen of Sunset passed away. And um I just want to take a moment of silence for him from our council to theirs that we respect and appreciate the service that goes into these offices. And uh hope that also that doesn't come to us. So if you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We begin our business tonight with public comment. This is a chance for anyone uh to bring to our attention something that may not be on our agenda. If it's not on our agenda, we won't be able to respond to that. If it is something that uh you would like to comment on, but it is not a public hearing now would be that opportunity. We do restrict these to three minutes. Uh, we are listening. Uh, it's not an interactive question and answer, but we're happy to hear your thoughts. If anyone is here to bring those thoughts. Come forward. Please just state your name and address for the record.
I'm John Bosworth. I live at fifteen thirty-two South eleven hundred West here in Syracuse. Had the opportunity to live in this community for three decades, and I, this is a great place to live. Uh, I am speaking behalf of several neighbors. We uh Stoker Park is in our backyard and we love that park. We've had many wonderful occasions to celebrate family uh gatherings, uh memorials there. And I just something I wanted to just, I guess I can't ask questions. You can't answer, so let me just share. We've watched the park under construction for the last year and a half. And we're pleased to see the new changes taking place there. But we've also noticed that uh since the beginning of this year that nothing has happened there. There's been no construction. Uh shovel hasn't turned then, and we're concerned. It has turned into what we call sticker park because of just obnoxious weeds and things growing there. We're hoping that the city council is aware and the Parks Department is aware that uh that we hope this will get moved along. Uh, we we hope to have that park back sometime this summer. Uh, we we hope there's a contract going on. We hope it's it's there's a finances in the budget to complete this. Uh, another point about that park is a portion of it is completed. That is the tennis courts. Uh, the parking lot is completed, the sidewalks are completed, the tennis court is completed, but the tennis courts are locked up. Uh, I've talked to some, I've talked to people in the Parks Department. They really didn't have a good answer why that is. So I would just share that while the construction is taking place, or if it is not taking place, could at least the tennis courts be back open up to the public? I'm I've watched several people come and go uh to the tennis courts to play and find that it is locked. And so please, just for your consideration, uh, we could find out what's going on with the with the construction of the park and if the tennis courts could be open to the public. Thank you.
Let me just make this comment, and that is that I'm aware that uh contracts have been signed and work is continuing. I understand that there are delays. Um, it's a difficult thing, but it is it is going forward.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Next item on our agenda tonight is we have uh three sets of minutes from previous meetings that we need to approve. Uh, that would be from April ninth in the business meeting, April ninth in our redevelopment agency special meeting, and April twenty-third in our work session. If there are any adjustments, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve those.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to be approved the minutes for the dates listed by you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, uh, we would like to uh do some recognition of Syracuse City as a patriot partner by the state of Utah. Who is head? Oh, Sean. Thank you for joining us.
Yes, thank you for having me. Um, so yeah, Syracuse City was recognized by Governor Cox and the state of Utah um for being a Utah Patriot Partner. So what that means is we have a policy um that whenever we have an applicant come through, um, we verify if they are a veteran or qualify for veteran preference points. Um, so the HR department verifies that with them. And then we let the hiring manager know so that when we interview, we can make sure to give them um the preference points. And this includes a veteran um or their spouse um to be able to get preference points so that they get either five percent or ten percent depending on their status added to their total score um throughout the interview process and testing process. And so um so we were recognized for being able to do that for our veterans. And um Syracuse City just wants to continue to um provide that for veterans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're happy to to
This is the certificate we got.
No, actually, that is an option, and we have chosen to be a participant. So uh item number five, this would be continued discussion and possible action regarding Syracuse City Public Communication Strategy. I'm going to ask Kara come forward. This is our communication specialist. Um, as just for information for the general public listening, um the Connection Magazine will have its or has had its last issue because the uh costs of printing have caused our supplier to go out and cancel our contract. So we need a strategy to go forward. There have been a few things that are put in the packet uh that you all should have. Um, do we have any questions at this point about those options or maybe a possible strategy? I will say uh as we're getting to that point that this is not unique to our city. The same supplier provided for many cities, and they have slowly been canceling all those contracts due to lack of advertising. It is a thing these days that people choose not to advertise because uh in preference of online advertising, online advertising has tracking that print advertising does not. And it's easy for them, for many people who would buy this advertising, to choose to say uh that uh, you know, we would like to be able to track how many people see our ad, how many people click on it, how many people choose to go that way. So it's just a thing of our modern society that print media is struggling to sell advertising, and that's what paid for our magazine. So the choice would be if we wanted to continue that, we'd have to pay entirely for those costs that the advertising was covering. I don't know that we have that in the budget, but we have options of doing it for some partial print, or we can just move everybody to a digital version, which seems to be the way of the world, but I'm open to comments and discussion. Who'd like to start?
So I did have a question on the, if we do through Freedom Mailing with the tabloid insertion with the utility bill, it's listed, we've got a monthly option. Can we do that less frequently, like quarterly?
We could, yeah. You can choose what months to do it. We don't have to do it every month. These are all options that you can say, yes, we want to do X, Y, and Z and pick and pair.
Hey.
And the the other thing that I'll mention is so Connection Publishing, they're still willing to do ongoing a semi-annual for the two kind of profitable months, or at least for now.
They would be. Uh, I I will express that my concern with us trying to cling to a print is that it would be infrequent. I I think that we probably would fare better if we spent a lot of attention in the first couple of months trying to move people to an online because we can host that on our website at no cost.
Yeah.
And um, well, the cost of our our staff, my, you know, managing that, but it would be no additional cost and
I'm
we could make the magazine as big as we want at that point because it's not limited to pages that, you know, break into the print size.
I'm I'm just wondering if if at least maybe just this final year, if we, you know, with with the June issue coming up or the with Heritage Days, if we maybe look at doing that one last round with them for a
In light of where we're at, let me just do keep make it clear. We've already made arrangements to put something in the utility bill for this month to cover heritage.
Not yet. So tonight you are talking about the June. We were able to get a, yeah, we were able to get a basic skeleton schedule into the May Connection Magazine because they kind of said, you know, we're probably we're not sure about June. So we did put something in May, but there is a proposal for June. Um, which again, you can choose which part and parcel you want to do, which would be moving towards that digital newsletter, putting something inside of the utility bill, which would be a little bit bigger to accommodate kind of what we've already told sponsors we're going to do, and then some paid advertising to try to convert people over to a digital side.
I mean, I my preference preference would probably be to maybe start with a an insert in the utility bill, but have that be a temporary thing as we transition to an all all digital.
I I think what you have in the packet, the June twenty-two, June twenty twenty-four proposal that has, there's a MailChimp digital newsletter. Um, and then you have the insertion fee with a tabloid, black and white, and then doing the promotion on meta Google and print. Think those, that's a good start. And then eventually we, I I would like to just transition to the the paid advertising where we just are just promoting our posts. I think that's where most people are getting their information anyway.
Yeah. So are you okay with moving forward with June as it's late?
I'm good with June twenty twenty-four as proposed. Any other company, any other suggestions on that?
I I agree with that so long as that's all it is.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you want to discuss the long-term options today? So July, moving forward.
Um, so yeah, this is the second part that I did ask Kara to prepare was what do we do after this month? I think this month is an easy decision because we do need it, and we have been collecting information to go forward on that path. I um, I I recommend the effort really go to trying to help people find the one online on the city website. I also think that there's a side effect. The more people that we get to look at the newsletter online, the more likely it is that we'll get them to find the other services we've been trying to convert people to on our website, like fix-it tickets and scheduling and calendars and all those things. Because we really still have a large number of people who don't uh choose to do that.
I looked through all the different options. I I admit, I I probably need more information on some of them. It's, I I guess I would recommend that we actually have a longer discussion with that. Work session where you go through each of those uh combinations in more detail. I I wasn't sure if, like, it says June and October. I wasn't clear on if that was, we just do the tabloid in June, October, all the rest was digital. That kind of where it was.
So it depends, like, option one and option two are both in all three of these options, you do have a print version that accompanies it, just because I think there is going to be a timeframe to convert people over from having a hard copy version to fully digital. And I also feel like with Heritage Days or your October festivities, sometimes it's nice to have something in hand that they can keep in reference. But again, we can go fully digital. It's whatever you guys choose. So those months, it was a larger tabloid just to accommodate the size of the events.
I'm I'm with Brett on this. I think for June and then the rest of it can go digital. Um, we have an unbalanced budget, you know?
Yeah.
So the rest, I I can't, I can't morally want to keep a magazine that's costing us money. We can't even buy our crossing guards new light stop signs, you know? That's so I I can't. Uh, June is good for me.
Okay. So uh, the other thing that I was going to mention is that we hope to be able to uh spur use of this by uh using the opt-in system that we use for emergency response as well. People can use that to be alerted when a new magazine comes out. But I mean, we've used that for other things as well. So you can get, people could be getting an alert that says, hey, there's a new magazine out every month.
Well, we would use the same notify me system and create a subscription list through there.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a way to do it that's not an emergency, but it is the same software.
Okay, I I guess that, yeah, I'd love to hear more about a lot of these options.
Yeah, and we can also send it out to the utility bill subscribers that are already signed up digitally. So we won't be starting from zero. We'll have a good foundation.
Magazine's not an emergency, but software should work the same.
I totally agree.
Uh, I, yeah, I'm I'm fine with the the June plan. Long-term options, obviously, we've got to discuss. But I'm still of the belief that we do maybe a kind of a a a temporary utility billing up tabloid and then kind of phase that out and move it all digital.
But I I do think we need some type of mailer that goes out. So I would love to talk more about this.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get June done and then worry about the rest.
So maybe what I'm looking for then is a motion that we will accept the action for June and that we will move the discussion to the next work session.
So moved as the mayor outlined.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. The next item is consideration or removal from the architecture or removal of a member of the Architectural Review Committee. This is a a statement's been sent out to all of you that describes this. Do we need uh any further discussion? I'll take a motion.
I so move that we approve the removal of a member of the Architectural Review Committee, Felix Espinoza, without cause.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is a proposed resolution tw- R twenty-four dash seventeen, appointing Sean Gilbert to the Architectural Review Committee. Have any questions or can I get a motion?
I motion that we appoint Sean Gilbert to the Arch- Architectural Review Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item is to accept fiscal year uh twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five tentative budget and set a public hearing date for June eleventh twenty twenty-four to consider adoption of a final budget. Uh, you have outlined what we have as uh current plus the discussions that we've had ongoing. I will now open this up for discussion amongst the council as this is your decision. Who wants to start?
I I'm fine with it, but I think we have I, I'm fine with it, but I think we have some work to do still.
And to be clear, there will be option to continue working on this in the work session. Uh, it will, we have to set the date of June eleventh as our final adoption. If that changes the tax rate, you will have until the truth and taxation hearing to address that.
I also think we have a little bit of work to do. I, 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 I think that. The twenty-one point two percent tax increase that as outlined here, I think that's too high. I think there's additional things that we need to consider, um. Uh, eliminating from the budget to, to lessen the tax burden on the citizens.
I agree with Paul.
Okay.
We want to go over any of those now or do you just want to, uh, do that in the work session?
My feeling is work session.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the options then would be to adopt what is in print and, uh, as tentative. And take this to a work session. You can debate now and make any modifications and accept those modifications. As the tentative budget. Those are options.
I, I have two things that I did want to discuss. So, so we've talked with the staff. And I actually would like to back off from my previous stance of, um, doing the full. Rate and allow the cap to go to the, originally it was a top three. I'm going to limit that to just the top two. Um, if we can do that, you guys understand what I'm talking about with the positions, uh, the others.
Senior management positions.
Positions and cap that. I think it was at eight that we settled.
Yeah, eight percent that was.
So I would like to make that modification to reduce the tax rate. The other thing, um, just because, uh, I think I also want to include. The, uh, pension, uh, two percent, I believe. I would like to include that in our adjustment for the employees.
Do I have any support for that amongst council to make those two adjustments at this time?
No.
I, I won't vote for that.
I support that.
I, well, I, I think I'd, I think I'd need to know. So that, that percentage on the, on the pension, is that included in that budget deficit that's, or that, uh? The twenty-one point two percent or that would be additional?
It is not.
Yeah. There, there are so many moving parts to this. I don't know that we're all in agreement on it. So I, I'd like further discussion. So that we, so that we're, because if we add one piece without looking at all the other pieces, I, I, I'm, I'm unsure what it does to that tax rate, Jordan.
Okay.
So it doesn't look like that has support at this time. That doesn't mean it can't come up in a work session and be approved later before June eleventh. Any other modifications before we. Move on a tentative budget?
Um, the, the modifications, a- and again, I know there's a, a lot of moving parts of this. The modifications that I'd be potentially looking at as far as reductions from, from the budget is. Uh, potentially removing the police lieutenant position, the part-time park maintenance facility individual. And, uh, I, I do, I, I think I'm in, in alignment with Jordan on the, the capping of benchmark wages. Um, for the, the up, upper two tiers, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Sounds like we have, we have three for the up, the.
The upper two tiers.
Yeah.
Um, you're not sure on the retirement. Those help us get to a, three people voting for the same thing. I, I could, I would, I would be supportive of that. But I, I do want to make sure we get the, uh, the retirement, so all those employees in there.
Yeah. And, and in, I, I would be okay with that as, but, but I'd want to, but I, I'd want to see. If there's some adjustments somewhere else we could make to facilitate that. But, but in, in theory, I, I would be okay with that, I think.
Well, we need a motion or something to go forward to the next agenda. And keep in mind, it is just to the next agenda. We will have this on the work session. No matter the outcome tonight, it will be open for discussion. It's not final until June eleventh. And then it's only final so far as, uh, it sets a, a limit for the possible tax increase, if any.
So if we make, if, if, if I agree to those adjustments, you're, you're, you're willing to at least tentatively support the, the retirement for those. Okay?
No.
But we, we have a third person.
I, I support that.
Okay. So you want to take a shot at that motion?
Sure, sure. So, uh, if I understand, it would be, I, I move that we accept, uh, this, uh, budget as in the. As outlined in the packet. Capping the top two levels of senior staff to the eight percent. Adding in the two percent or the, I can't remember the exact percentage.
Two point one five percent.
Yeah, that's why I didn't remember. Two point one five for, um, the employees that doesn't come out of their paychecks. Um, then you said which ones?
Um, elimination of the police lieutenant position and the part-time, the part-time mark, uh, park maintenance facility person.
Okay. Those two as well. That gets us, we can move forward.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Hey, that passes three, two. That's the way it will appear on the next agenda. Uh, the next is a public hearing. Uh, this is to, uh, resol, or this is for a resolution, our twenty-four dash fourteen. Adjusting the Syracuse City budget for fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. This would be to make some adjustments. Steve, would you like to preview those just quickly?
Yeah, quite, quite a bit of the changes are just, uh, modifications to our capital projects plan. Uh, as we've gone along, we've had some revised, um, amendments to those plans. So majority of those are, um. You know, on this list, there's one thousand west. That one we, we found as we, we got into that project that we had a secondary water line that was pretty old. And needed to be replaced. It wasn't in the original budget. Um, another one on here that was a change from last discussion is Stoker Park, um, with, with the, um. But original budget, we had estimated around two hundred thousand dollars for the landscaping. And, uh, getting into a little bit more, we, we recognize that it's going to cost a little, a lot more than that to, to do. So, um, the revised budget is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. The rest of these we talked about in the work session last time, with the exception of, we talked about the road utility fee. In the twenty twenty-five budget, we actually had a study in our class C road fund. So we're actually proposing to put that in this year's budget so we can get started on it immediately instead of waiting until July first. Those are the only changes from last council meeting discussion.
Okay. First, I'm going to declare this in public hearing. If anybody has any comments, uh, regarding the proposed changes from the public. Seeing none, I will close public hearing. And now I'll open it up to council. Council, do you have any further discussion of the proposed, uh, adjustments to the fiscal twenty twenty-four budget?
Nope, no questions.
Okay. With no further, then can I get a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I motion that we, uh, approve, uh, Jen, item nine. Uh, proposed resolution, our twenty-four dash fourteen, amending the Syracuse City fiscal budget for the year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item is also a public hearing. This is proposed resolution, our twenty-four dash fifteen, updating and amending the Syracuse City consolidated fee schedule by making adjustments throughout. Steve, would you highlight those adjustments that we're about to make?
Yeah, very quickly, we had some changes to our public safety impact fee. This, this fee goes up every year with our, with our plan. Uh, we had some science permit fee changes, alcohol license changes, some minor changes. To our business licensing section, increasing passport photo fees from ten to fifteen dollars. Uh, our Robinson ways contract, three point two percent for our garbage hauling. And a new one I've added as, uh, tackle football, we want to consolidate into one fee line item and increase it to two twenty-five. We need that now because registration for football actually begins in June instead of July. Those are the changes.
All right. Having heard those, I will first open this up to public hearing. There's anyone in the public that would like to comment on those before we have our discussion? Seeing none from the public, I close public hearing and I move us forward to, uh, discussion amongst council. Is anybody got any questions or discussion amongst those items proposed changes? They have been discussed in a previous work session. Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move that we approve proposed resolution, our twenty-four dash fifteen, updating and amending the Syracuse City consolidated fee schedule by making adjustments throughout.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Steve. Uh, posted, or that passes unanimously. The next item, item eleven. Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash ten, amending the Syracuse City zoning map for property located at approximately twenty-two fifty west Antelope Drive. From residential R two in the city, uh, town center overlay to architect or agriculture A one. With the town center overlay to jur, general commercial with the town center overlay. Okay. We've discussed this in a work session, uh, quite in depth. At the time, the motion was discussed as, uh, waiting to see what the proposed, uh, use would be. But I'll open it up to council for further discussion.
But to be clear, we didn't vote on this. This was just discussed.
This was just discussed. This would be our vote. Tonight.
So they included, and I realize this is not binding, they included a little bit of a, of kind of what their vision would be for this. Particular parcel, but I, I, where that's not, not binding, I can't remember what our options are for. Would they have to simultaneously submit zone change and if we wanted to tie it?
If it fits in the zone, they would be allowed to move forward, even if it does not match this, the proposed.
Well, I guess my question then is.
There is no development agreement.
There is no development agreement in this case.
Is that the only way we can tie it to a particular?
It is cr, under the current changes in the law, yes.
At any time that you make a zone change, you can make that zone change condition. If you know what those conditions are and set them at this time.
Right. And at this time, that is not very clear. Yeah.
Um, I guess I would love to, is the, can we ask questions of the developer? Are they here?
Well, they had their chance to come forward during the work session, so that wouldn't be this.
Well, this is new information that was provided.
Right.
Packet. So I'd like to ask questions about this, but it's up to you.
But it's non-binding and it's, okay. Anyone else feel like there's need for that?
I, I, I mean, I, I am intrigued by the concept, but a, anything that's, uh, I, I mean, it is non-binding, whatever they say, but.
Yeah. So I mean, it does change what we had structured the conversation as.
I mean, you, you could add on, uh, and I guess you'd have to have the development agreement.
You would.
On the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
Um, have we asked the developer if he'd be willing to? To, to go in with the developer agreement? Development agreement? That been asked?
No, it's.
No, we haven't discussed the development agreement, but like Colin had mentioned, we could do a conditional approval. So if, if you like the plan that is shown and you want to limit it to whatever this use is retail, strip mall. You could say, we approve this on the condition that the land use for this property is only. Retail and you could do that.
Now, I'm just going to point out, and this is fine. You can change wherever, whenever you want, but. It seemed to be in the work session, the issue was you didn't know who the tenants would be, and this would be the same situation. So.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, I, I want to work with, with people that are willing to invest in our community. And I think this is a good investment for, uh, the retailer. I, but for example, like, I actually think there's a, probably some potential for a drive-through on this. But that's not on the plan.
Not on the plan.
And so that's where I, my kind of issue is, I, I don't want him locking to this because these are boxes that don't tell me much. But like, if he was planning to do, like, when we did some of the, the developer agreements for some of the other, um, developments that went in the east. Uh, we saw this would be a drive-through, um, we'll have tenants in there. Um, this, there'll be some center stores. I, I can't, I guess I want more detail on these buildings just a little bit. Um, I, I really want to help him move this forward, but I, I just need a little bit more.
Does anybody else?
Uh, I, I agree. I, I think we're headed in the right direction and it gives us a little bit more information, but I don't think we're. I, I agree with Jordan. We want to help get to the, the right thing for Syracuse. I just think we need a little bit more time to, to work through it. I don't think we're, in my opinion, I don't think we're quite ready for the, the zone change.
What's the right thing for Syracuse?
Um, s- some good quality commercial, which they're headed towards.
Yeah, that's such a vague answer.
That's fair.
Well.
It's a vague situation.
It is all pretty vague at this moment.
So, so conceptually, I, I, I like this, but I just want to see more detail because I do think that they're. Uh, like if you have targets of who you're trying to get in these spaces, if, if it's, what I don't want is empty storefronts. That we just build a building and hope someone hops in there. So I guess I'd love to find out what information, any information I can get. And I feel like if we sat down and talked with the developer, we could probably get some of these, these questions answered.
You're presuming that that's even available because the suggestion was made that, uh, people need to make sure they put that in the packet if it's available.
Fair.
All right. So can I get a, a motion on this proposed order?
Anyone?
You guys did all the talking. Feel free.
So I would actually like to table it until we can, uh, see if we can get just a little more detail. I, I think we're on the right track. Or motion to table.
Do we need a definitive timeline to table though?
Yeah, I think that.
Add it to the next work session. We can go over it again.
What's our time limit on responding to applications?
So we would only recommend a date certain tabling if there were a public hearing associated with it, just so that we could properly advertise the public hearing. But if you are just tabling for more disac, discussion in the work session, you don't need to provide a date. You just table it.
I'd love to talk to us about this more at the work session and, uh, I, I'd invite the developer to, um, give us just a little bit more information. Cause I, like I say, I, I, conceptually, I think we're, we're, we're almost there. Just. Help me be able to justify why I voted yes to this.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Well. Based on previous, uh, discussion and, you know, again, things change. You would be asking for a lot more information and, and that you're presuming that that's even available.
Yep.
Okay. Then what? Do you want to, if it's not available, what do you do?
Then I don't move forward.
Okay.
I mean.
So, all right. So we need a motion.
Even with more information, it's still, we can change it on you though.
Well, we, we, we can discuss the development agreement, uh, at that, during the work session as well. If, if you can get a conditional approval that says, look, you, you build it like you've shown or something similar that, you know.
I, I heard what the attorney said. I was sitting here.
Then. Why'd you ask the question?
Well, I, I'm going to just ask this, we bring this back to the question on the table. So.
I, I still mostly table it to the work.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
But I.
Okay, the motion passes. It is tabled. For a future work session. Uh, proposed ordinance twenty-four dash eleven, amending the Syracuse City zoning map. For property located approximately twenty-four nineteen west, twenty-seven hundred south from R one to R three. Go ahead.
Uh, there's, there's really no new information. So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm on the applicants in the audience.
Oh, this is just that little property that we talked about that would, this is probably the best bet for it.
Oh, this is just that little property that we talked about, that would, this is probably the best bet for it, to make it the rest of that usable.
So can I get a motion?
Yeah, hold on, let me go back to the page.
Item.
Um, I move that we approve the application, um, amending zoning map to R three from R one at the stated address. I can't see it on here, where is it? Twenty four nineteen west, twenty seven hundred south.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item is proposed ordinance twenty four dash twelve, amending section ten dot thirty five dot forty of the Syracuse City Code pertaining to home occupations and more specifically daycare regulations. Counsel, any further discussion here?
And God bless daycare workers.
If not, can I get a motion?
I move, we approve proposed ordinance twenty four twelve, amending section ten thirty five zero four zero of the Syracuse City Code pertaining to home occupations and more specifically daycare regulations.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is proposed resolution R twenty four dash sixteen, authorizing the administration to execute interlocal agreement for third-party building inspections.
This is kind of what they were saying, that they were already doing a little bit, right?
Yeah, we, we kind of have to comply with the legislature here. So unless there's further discussion, I'll take a motion on this as well.
I move that we approve proposed resolution R twenty four dash sixteen, authorizing administration to execute interlocal agreement for third-party building inspections.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item fifteen, proposed ordinance R twenty four dash thirteen amending title four, chapter six of the Syracuse City Code to prohibit tampering with streetlights and providing penalties for such tampering.
I feel like.
Can't believe we have to do that.
Oh, my gosh.
But.
Let's make it quick, because we do.
I move that, I approve, that we approve proposal ordinance twenty four dash thirteen, amending title four, chapter six in Syracuse City Code to prohibit tampering with streetlights and providing penalties for such tampering.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Gosh.
With enthusiasm, that passes. Item number.
Other thing you need to list, there's a, there's a penalty for breaking stuff?
Yes, we do, we have. Authorized.
You got to find him first, chief.
Item sixteen, authorize administration to award twenty twenty four road improvement project contract. Um, this is, is outlined. If there's any questions, we could take those, otherwise uh, we do have this outlined in the packet pretty clearly.
Made sense. Um, I move that we authorize administration to award twenty twenty four road improvement contract to Staker and Parsons Companies.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, proposed resolution R twenty four dash eighteen, authorizing Syracuse City Fire Department to enter into a contract for the purchase of a fire engine truck. Chief?
Hello. We've discussed.
We've done this several times.
Yeah, we've discussed this before. We are, we've got a lead time of up to forty eight months for a new fire engine to be produced and manufactured and delivered, so.
What if a yellow one becomes available? Will you get it?
But we'll paint it red.
Hey, well, so counsel, would you?
Sorry.
I sorry.
Sorry.
Just to confirm by pre-ordering, there's no financial obligation or obligation to purchase.
Not until it's, well, there is an obligation to purchase.
There is the advantage that we get today's prices.
Yes.
Not in four years when it's actually finished.
Yes, if we cancel the order, there is a prepayment penalty up to a certain amount of time, and then after that, it's the, it's the full thing, but it's the, it's, it would not be lucrative to, to cancel out. Are there any other questions?
Nope.
That you have? Okay.
Uh, I move, we accept resolution R twenty four dash eighteen, authorizing Syracuse City Fire Department enter, enter into a contract for the purchase of the fire engine outlined in the packet.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item eighteen, proposed resolution R twenty four dash nineteen, authorizing the mayor to execute real estate purchase agreement for Fire Station thirty two property, seller being Utah Department of Transportation. We have talked about this for an awful long time, and we're glad that this is finally able to execute.
We're already budgeting for the fire station. How are we just?
We have.
Property.
It's taken this long to get the contract worked out.
I feel like we're a little backwards on our planning.
I would sure like it if we could finish this.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we accept resolution R twenty four nineteen, authorizing the mayor to execute real estate purchase for Fire Station thirty two property, since we're already building on it.
Second. Sorry, you dot.
Yes, and unfortunately, we're operating at our own risk at the moment, so moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's why they haven't broke ground.
Yes, that's true. Uh, item nineteen, authorized administration to execute quitclaim deed documents for Davis School District for the land trade transaction. We have talked about this years ago, but now we are finally to the point where we can execute this agreement, and I would like to be able to do that.
Perfect, that's an easy thing to do. Um, I move that we approve the authors, approve to authorize the administration to execute quit, uh, quit claim deed documents with Davis School District for land trade transaction.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move, motion passes unanimously. Wow, that was a whirlwind of business. Now we will open this up for public comment, if anyone would like to comment on something they'd like for a future agenda, or something they'd like us to be aware of.
Click the light poles.
And seeing none, I will close public comment. At this point, we will um at this point, we will go for mayor and city council announcements. Jen, we will start with you.
Um, the cop lunch is tomorrow, and the fire dinner is on Thursday. Don't wear jeans. Um, Miss Syracuse is having her event, it's a multicultural event on June eighth at the museum, and it, there'll be a ton of people there, it'll be super great, it's on a Saturday. That's all I can think of.
Jordan?
All right, um. Where was I? Oh, yeah. Uh, I want to thank everyone who participated in the Great Syracuse Shakeout. Um, we had a really good um participation from the districts and areas within the city. Um, we'll be presenting that at the work session, I believe.
Yes.
Um, we've been putting together and uh, good response. Uh, that committee does a stand-up job preparing the city for um, helping the city prepare to respond to a disaster. So I want to thank all of those who spent a lot of time on that and prepared for that. And then um, echo not only the event for Miss Syracuse on eighth, but also the Miss Syracuse pageant.
Oh, yes, yes.
Itself, I think that's the
That's the very
The next week.
Saturday.
And I hear the emcee is top notch.
Is it you?
Bummer. Wow.
That way your daughter's not in it, so you could be the host.
Uh, that's all I have.
It's all you got.
I don't have any updates.
I am looking forward to attending the Utah Prevention Coalition Summit, representing Syracuse City. And that is a summit that uh works on prevention through coalition to prevent drug use and mental illness. Looking forward to um, reporting on that.
Me too. Right.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay. Uh, I would just uh say at this time, uh, to everyone in, on the council, if you have not uh got tickets to the Kurt Bestor concert.
Got them.
Please uh, please do and support the arts. This is a great opportunity uh with Mr. Bestor coming to be a part of our orchestra concert. It's amazing to have a guest artist of his caliber. So we hope to get uh the rest of the tickets sold. We are more than halfway sold out, but we'd like to get the rest of them, it's May twentieth. Don't miss the opportunity, because his concerts go for a lot more. We have, we've got a huge discount to get him here. Okay.
Oh, also, sorry, ADHD. Mosquito abatement is full on, so call them if you want extra sprays.
All right.
That was my subtle hint of call them.
Okay.
Um, how often can you call them?
You can get one extra spray a week. But I'm going to say this again, and they got upset with me last time. So if you call on a Monday, and they do their sprays, and then you have your neighbor call, they'll come back around.
All right, so let me add to, to one other thing, uh.
Careful on bees, though.
They got a list, and it's actually um uh, computerized, that as soon as they get close to within five hundred feet of where the no-spray zone is, it automatically shuts off on its own. They don't even have to shut it off.
That's.
Okay. Uh, one other piece of information, uh, the North Davis Sewer District has uh taken over, we approved on our last meeting. We will take over the school age tours for the county school districts. Uh, previously, they had been going to South Davis, they're going through some major renovations, so now all the school children will be coming for the next two years to North Davis. And uh, that's a great education opportunity. In the same day, they go to the landfill and the sewer plant. As exciting as that may seem to you, it is very educational.
I did, though. It's not. It's exciting.
It's educational. Um, our plant has something that the other plants do not, in that we do cogeneration of energy uh, where we recapture methane gas and turn it into energy. Seventy-five percent of the plant operates on cogen, which is no other plant in the state does.
I hear they also have a display case of stuff they've found in the sewer.
They do. They do.
A lot of little cars. A lot of little cars.
And you're welcome to go and see that at any time. All right, that's it. Uh, there was a consideration to adjourn into closed session. That was no longer needed, so we will not be adjourning into closed session. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.